At six o'clock and I'm calling this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome everyone. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's YouTube channel. Just a reminder to the audience, whether you are presenting or just commenting on an agenda topic, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the mayor stating your name and address. There is a seven-minute time limit. Non-agenda items and presented under citizens not on the agenda, but will not be discussed by the council. But of all, we show courtesy and respect at all classes. Thank you. Roll call please. Mary Ann Winry.
Maygold. Austin, like here, founder.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have a note to the council on the meeting agenda. In order to allow you council more prep and review time, items thirty-one and thirty-two are being removed from the agenda. The special council meeting will be scheduled instead and we'll talk about that scheduling under mayor's comments. So why are you removing discussion, citizens not on the agenda? Good. Why are you removing citizens not on the agenda?
Did I say the wrong numbers?
Thirty-one.
Yeah, looks like you do. Okay.
You're intending to put in those two.
Okay, thirty-two and thirty-three.
I stand corrected.
We are at the ninety days when Chris was hired, but he said. Yes, in order to allow the council more time to prepare and review, we're moving up to tonight's discussion and we'll schedule separate special city council.
For when?
We will discuss that under mayor's comments. As soon as we can. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, need a motion to be approved?
I'm.
Paul and David. I have.
I'm.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to reports. Cynthia, are you going to do the sheriff's report for us tonight?
No, I don't have it.
You don't have it? Okay. The other department reports are in your packet. Does anyone have any questions for the department heads? Or for the city engineer, or yourself, or Chris? Hearing none, move on. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. How our public hearings work is we will open the public hearing. Presentation on the topic will occur. Council will have a discussion. We'll listen to public comments and then we'll vote the public hearing. The first public hearing that we have on the agenda is for the bridge replacement project. Going to open that public hearing and Shane, are you going to present some information to us, please?
Don't have anything new to present, just plans and specifications to project. And they were submitted last month by the paper copies. D O T specs. Project will be bid through D O T with letting date of December sixteenth. What day? December sixteenth?
Well, council has a copy of the plans at the table. There's also a copy on the entry table for the public if you'd like to look. Are there any other questions for Shane? Have you seen any public comments? Does anyone, doesn't have any questions from the public? Council, do you have any questions? Quiet. And Shane, remind us the actual construction start date if all goes well.
June first.
Middle letting December sixteen, June one. Project start date projected. Not hearing any questions, very answerable. Need a minute?
Yeah.
He's talking. Paul needs a minute. Maybe, roll call, thanks to reviewing. Could you give us just a couple, a brief overview of the the steps, the phases of this is what occurred? Just a very brief math.
Steps that this will occur.
Well.
It's right now the intersection project, reminding the roadway intersection service, when I'm doing regular neck construction. And so they have one milestone.
Did go back to the point of answer, Shane, thank you.
They have milestone, currently, I think it's made first, I begin. Everything completed except for final water main and storm sewer that's under the existing bridge. And they get to that point, they had, they started like, so we bumped the start date for the bridge project June first. So getting get their, reach that milestone by June first, bridge contractor will come in and start the bridge project to demo that bridge on June first. Go forward with constructing the new bridge and the bridge approaches.
So the demo project will start approximately June first and.
To demo the existing bridge, Boomerang will demo all the approaches and stuff to use the bridge before that as part of their projects. And with D O T, it's a ninety-day working contract for the bridge project and it's a hard start date of June first. So it's not a late start date or early start date, so firm, it's everything due.
We're good. Is this a working day contract or is it a completion date?
It's a ninety-day.
This ninety?
Ninety. It's worth the contract, ninety days.
Any other questions? Next, council. Public. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item number seven, which is to consider a resolution to approve the plans and specification for the bridge project. Sound.
Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Hi, 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 hi.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number eight, which is another public hearing. This one regarding our fiscal year twenty-six budget amendment number one. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Cynthia, do you want to talk about the budget amendment? Sorry.
I have a question. Is that an extra copy over there?
Extra copy on the desk? Of what?
The, that's.
Green plan, yeah, yeah.
Why don't you just give it to Bart so she doesn't have to take eight thousand photos?
Oh, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. David.
I'm here to help.
I see. Thank you. It's online.
It's online too, yeah.
Yeah, you could just take that copy if you want, Bart. It is on Airbnb. You go. So you've got a budget amendment report. You can see revenues that we're adjusting based on actuals. Transfers in are about debt service transfers in and capital projects. But then the second page is expenses. Think it's pretty explanatory. If you have a question about a line, I've tried to give you the detail. The block cameras, fire department using money out of their savings account, the fire truck change order. Payroll adjustments, the library lot purchasing it and the legal and the reporting and any expenses associated with that. Harps. Those were Joe's input. Economic development. General government, trainings, wages, legal. That's the big one there.
Yeah, why did you try to?
Because our monthly bills are sky high. Security system newsletter, new copier, the computer upgrade that we didn't know about going in. Net service, those new interest on the, the brand new G O. I didn't know those when we did budget. The fees on the twenty-four are the, like the bonding attorney fees and then there was a three hundred and fifty ending B on the twenty twenty that I didn't know we were going to have. Capital projects. You know, Seventy-Sixth Avenue is not going to happen right away, so that's a big one. I took almost all of that off. The rest of them, just my best guess. I'm kind of waiting for some numbers from Shane. I'm sure somewhere later in the fiscal year, we'll have to adjust for capital projects as we know more. The meter purchases and QTS. The water revenue in, we didn't know about the exact amount of the payments for the new S R F. And transfers out. Questions?
The water revenue, Cindy, you have, does that include what, latent?
The water revenue, are you talking revenue or expenses?
Revenue.
Revenue.
Or is that wait to see once that can go up again in the future? Or what latent? Water usage that I'll be.
They're up.
That's not included in this.
Yeah, so that'll go up once.
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't. And just remember, just like in March and April, the budget's our best guess at this point. Again, some things are going to be over, some things are going to be under. And we'll look at it again in the spring. Have we received any questions from the public in advance, Cynthia? No. Does anyone in the public have any questions about our budget amendment? Council, do you have any further questions for Cynthia? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and we'll move on to consider the resolution to approve the fiscal year twenty-six budget amendment number one. Motion please.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Mary Ann. Hi.
Hi, 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 hi.
Thank you. Move on to item number ten. Discussion of motion concerning purchase order for twelve sets of bunker gear. Chief, thank it, please.
So last month I was here and we purchased five sets and thought I'd be back to purchase more. Beer came in, had my specifications that we wanted. So we're going to purchase twelve more sets to replace the stuff that is outdated, if that's okay. When more do you have yet to get updated? After, we'll be caught up for this year and then it'll just trickle in like one, two sets a year for the next while. But this is just, when we got the last set of bunker gear, we received a grant for it, so we bought a whole bunch. Well, now that ten-year whole bunch is running out, so we have bought three or four sets throughout the last four or five years.
And you're using the donated money that's in the fire department savings.
We had a bunch of businesses donate money for personal protection, so we're going to use that money to purchase it. That's why we're getting the big savings accounts.
Budget amendment.
Budget. Not swap.
Motion by. Becky.
Paul and Eric.
All right, all right. I'd like to say, Tom, Nick, thank you for what you've done. Sorry you didn't make it, but you guys are some fine outstanding handful of people. I like how you do your things and you don't have an agenda and I appreciate that and I think that's awesome and you will be missed.
I have another meeting actually.
Here we go.
Okay. Number eleven, resolution to consider a soft soap easement on city property.
Uh, this is the easement we talked about a little bit a couple of months ago until smoke was here. We, Shane and Derek have all the kids worked out of this thing and I think it's ready for your approval. It did go from five feet wide to fifteen feet wide. Because of the language back and forth and what there is in port.
It's right behind the back corner, right?
Yes, just in that small strip. And every tension, it's clear the map will be in your back and they'll have to notify our city if they need to get in there or cut anything. Your storm sewer, storm sewer isn't there?
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Mary Ann. Hi.
Hi, 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 hi.
Thank you. Move on to item number twelve, the resolution to approve the twenty-twenty-six F Y S A city and fair facts partnership agreement. Okay.
Well, it's the same agreement that we've had for the last forty years. The only difference being is that a cost of goods sold has changed. We actually went down this year. So in twenty-twenty-six, any civic organization or a nonprofit would be, the work they can session stand would get fifty-one point nine one percent of days receipts instead of fifty percent. Any questions?
Just curious because I was looking through the, kind of, I know it's a question that years past, but is there, is there room to have? Like just, just a lot of things are missing, like termination clause for both parties, duration of the actual agreement, because it just says gear reading, but it doesn't say here starts. Liability, so like if equipment breaks, who's actually responsible? Or the city or the F Y S A or both? Reporting.
I believe all those questions are answered in the agreement. It's a yearly contract, so once a year we review it to see if we want to continue on with it or not. As far as the equipment breaking, it is stated in there that if the equipment needs repaired, F Y S A pays for the repair. If the equipment needs replaced, the city pays for replacement and that's kind of the procedure for the city to end up owning all of that equipment that right now they do not. What was the other questions?
Well, as far as equipment break-ins, I get, I get your point about replacing, but like as far as liabilities concerned, so during one of the volunteer events, who's responsible if someone gets hurt?
The city is. It's their employees.
But if it's the city employees, then it's not a volunteer event.
That's correct, but there's a provision in there that states any event that the city gets the money for, that they bank the money, they pay for the employees to work that event. I guess I'm not understanding your question then, Dan.
No, that's okay. I, I, I I said this on a few other things too, it's like, I, I know we have a conversation later about attorneys looking at this or that and legal expenses, but I think any contract that we go into, I think the attorney should look it over just to make sure that it has everything in there that.
In two thousand twenty-one, our attorneys did look disagreement over and this is what became of it. So we have had the attorneys look at it. We just don't have them look at it every single year because there's nothing changing except the percentages. But it has been reviewed by the attorney. And any other questions? Don't, don't leave anything out on the table, Dan. If you've got a question about it, please ask me.
Uh, well, I guess not a, not a question. I, I still thought the same thing I brought up last couple of years. It's kind of odd that we have a nonprofit and a full-time employee that are one and the same and having a contract. It is, it's weird. I know it's a difference of opinion, but.
Well, for one thing, I, I don't get a vote on the agreement. You guys do. That's the city. So I, I don't understand what the, what it would be, what the problem there would be. And if the city council thinks that this is not a good agreement, please let me know. But it seems to me this is a pretty no-brainer for the city council. You got access to all the sporting equipment, concession equipment at no charge. And you still get all of them to me.
Any other questions, council? There, any other? No? Okay. Need a motion to approve this agreement?
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Mary Ann. Hi.
Hi, nice, hi, hi.
Thank you. Moving on to item number thirteen, resolution to approve pay application number two from the construction.
So this is a pay application for peak construction for the the park pavilion restrooms. They've got block out for the restrooms. They, they, they got the rebar in, they've got the foundations for the pavilion. We're going to get that paved here in the next couple of days and then we're going to pave the sidewalk. And the pavilion pad later this week.
You know what changed in this was like the locks on the door hardware.
Yeah, that was, that was, you know, changed one of them last month.
But I don't want to hear anything else. All the same.
Yeah.
So they got all the block up?
Yep.
Any other questions for Shane? Hearing none, need a motion to approve this pay application?
Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Hi, 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 hi.
Moving on to item number fourteen, which is a resolution to accept the work performed by Midwest Underground contractors approving a balanced change order and finally change incentive pay. This is related to sanitary sewer extension at sixteen eleven lines.
Yeah, they finished the project. I understand they did a little touch up on some sod here like last week or today. They had a little point in it and they addressed that issue. When they add on the residential connection. I think it seems to be in good condition.
What comment, I guess, chose us, chosen to see the area themselves in front of their house, which you know, decided we're going to go by. The manholes were solid.
Any questions for Shane or the customers? If not, need a motion to accept this resolution?
Motion, second.
Roll call please, Mary Ann. Hi.
Hi. Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you. Moving on to number fifteen. Consider a resolution to approve change order number one for West Cemetery Road realignment reconstruction project. Shane.
Yeah, so the, the water main material for the water main going up Eagleview Drive in between in the advanced traffic and we have Stinger. Stinger, 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 yeah. Is, we call it PVC with restraint noise just because of the type of use and some of the materials they use there. And so Boomerang can only get five thousand feet of that material. So we revise the material to a thorough lock, still PVC with thorough lock, so then the increase on their unit price of like seven dollars in some sense for like a hundred and sixty feet. Which is like an eighteen and another change order basically.
Any questions for Shane on this? Not need a motion to approve the change order number one?
Oh. Second.
Roll call.
Hi, hi, hi. Hi.
Last thing. Thank you. Item number sixteen. Resolution to approve a pay application number one from Boomerang for the same project.
Yep, this mayor bears in pay application number one. They've got most of the sanitary sewer installed west of the existing line. So temporary access, if you've been up there, gray access before their staging items is the bulk of that pay application.
Any questions for Shane on this pay application? Hearing none, consider a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Hi, 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 hi.
Last thing. Thank you. Moving on to item number seventeen. Considering a resolution to approve an engineering services agreement with home engineers for the twenty twenty-five Phase Two sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
Yeah, so this is the phase two for the sanitary rehab. You recall, we did a day one beginning in twenty twenty-five. It's four or five sections of sewer. You know, in turn goals to get pretty much base seventy-five, eighty-five percent of the existing sanitary sewer. The original part of Tom's off Prairie Creek. Re-lined and or repaired. So this is the second phase of that. That Christian Bryant last week told. That Christian Bryant last week told him the details on that and. Hopefully we can get out bids for competitive quotes here. That the next month, that work again, accomplished. They went early fall, early, early spring, if possible.
Did you see an area in mind?
Yeah, so what we're looking at doing was uh last year, we focused on. Some of the worst sections of pipe and they were on the north side of the tracks, south of Prairie Creek, right? So what Brian was saying, let's finish up that neighborhood, so state work for the tracks and finish up. In south of the creek, but I get much of that taken care of, hopefully all of it this year, just kind of depends what prices come in. Depending on um how things go with the Vanderbilt Street, I mean P railroad, the. Um repair project. We may jump down and get that, but it'd be us now we face three, there's a section of sewer just south of the tracks there that is in bad shape that needs reworded. But that can be based really soon. So we haven't, we don't have the exact pipe yet, but I think it's going to be north of the tracks and south of Prairie Creek.
What do you think then, then there'll be the bridge will be done? I'm waiting on the.
Me in the crossroad?
Yeah.
Um, obviously, we're on a different topic, but the D O T, we'll look at that and. Sounds like we'll get some funding on that, but I think that'd be F Y twenty-seven. That was with state fiscal year, I think that'd be October twenty-sixth. Or that money available after I went through that detail. So probably twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, their latest detail um email to me indicated that we've been approved for that funding, but. Through the government shutdown, everything's pushed back and they can't. Forward. So I just caution you, that's topics not on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Alright, right. I'm sorry.
I might have to ask that.
You get a demerit point.
Well.
He can ask the question, but the diet should not be happy.
What's the budget for this? What, how much do we budget?
So it's it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred for construction, twenty-five for engineering. The the bid limits, I think it was, I haven't checked it, I don't know if it's come out yet for twenty twenty-six, it usually comes out around December. But I think it was two oh five or two oh six is the a limit for. Competitive bid versus competitive or public bidding versus competitive quotes, so we try to keep it under that two hundred. So last year, if I do the same type of thing, you'll focus on two, three, four sections of pipe. And we know we can get done and then do an alternate for a couple of other sections and price coming, then we'll can get.
We borrowed two hundred and twenty-five and I think both previous bond and the newest bond. In the phase one, we didn't spend all of it, but we um it had a sewer purpose, so we put it towards the sixty-eight eleven extension. So when the space two gets done, then we'll kind of look and see. The planned sewer money, is there a balance left or do we still need some more? And then there'll be a council decision whether you want to. Use some of the other bond funds or to um transfer from the sewer fund to the capital project. Any other questions related to the phase two sanitary sewer project and specifically the engineering services? Need a motion to approve them?
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi, 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 hi.
Bye. Thank you. Moving on to number eighteen. Resolution to approve pay application number two, the ID for the fire station addition.
Yes, I hope you guys have all seen the fire station edition. It's up and standing. The roof is on. Uh, they have the. Floor inside ready to be poured, it's all ornamented, ready to go, rebar in. Any questions on the project?
No questions, counsel? Okay, need a motion to approve pay application number two?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please, Brian.
Hi, 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 hi.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nineteen. Set a resolution to approve an application agreement for highway right-of-way utilities for D O T, M C C, California of Iowa. All from on his media now. Who's going to talk about this? Chris? Eric?
This is a application for the right-of-way work proposed. It was delayed my month. Due to technical difficulties. But uh it's all good. Any questions?
Eric, is this the extension that's coming down? East side of Eightieth Street? They're doing it last couple of months.
No, they have a permit for that.
Yeah.
And that's that's reasonable. Okay. Eric, full of first.
It's not, not an extension off of that.
This is tied to the intersection project. This is all.
So once this is so much this is approved, do we have to get another permit or a D O T permit, or is this that everything?
That should be.
This was the D O T permit.
I said one and done with this one.
This is the last one for my intersection project. Yeah.
I thought it came with food and I was like, oh, it's not moved yet. It's right in the middle of our project.
Yeah, unfortunately, MediaCom, John reached out to them. New Year's Eve or January second to all utility companies and MediaCom didn't respond until like June or July.
Everyone's done with them?
Everybody else is done.
Okay, well, at least better.
Any other questions for Eric? It's not need a motion to approve?
No. Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi, 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 hi.
I don't think she's going on with her notes, because I actually, that my actual. Actually, I'll just have a standard.
Okay, moving on to item number twenty, discussion of possible motion to verify. What money's going to be used for the newly purchased lot, the corner of Vanderbilt and Main?
Yeah, when I um. Wrote down the motion, I did not understand or hear that it was lost, okay? So um I believe you made a motion for lost, but we don't have payroll in lost. So I need to know if you um. I put a document in here. Do you guys see the document with number twenty?
Yeah.
I don't know why I know. Um, so. Uh, we've never paid any payroll out of lost before, but if you want, we can transfer um. Money from lost into the general, or you can have the library use the same money they used to purchase the lot. Or you can just have them use money in their regular um budget already set up. I certainly would not um. Recommend that because I didn't know if any of that work could be done. Um, not any problem paying for the materials in lots, but the. And you've got a report, I can't bring it up because I don't see the document, but I calculated what the time um cost was for the lot payroll. Say that we have that figure.
Lot payroll is twenty-one seventy-two forty-nine.
Alright.
Just for a lot.
Yeah.
Brandon, Brian, Lynn and.
Yeah. And the uh city share of the Bennys that go with us. And I think they're done, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks good. Um.
Okay, so the right, that other was just regular library payroll.
Right, I just have it on there because I needed to balance. No, because I needed to do the math. That that was a math thing for me, uh because I had the general ledger number, but it had everybody.
And so I met with Kathy about this uh last week. And I'd suggest that you guys, if you can, take it out of our transfer from lost. Keep it out Kathy's budget, um you know, to get an addition.
It will still be in her budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, but not her.
Right.
Uh, she'd get ready to do an addition, that's just money that I have to replace if it is.
I think that's what we kind of talked about last month.
Yeah, we assumed that. I went back and watched the video and it's, there was a lot of over talking, it was really hard to tell. What was being moved and, I guess I suggested they come out lost, I guess, I don't know where it landed.
I feel like it's in the public and program, we should pick, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
The the layout, yes, at this point. Is is city property, I guess.
Yeah.
So something that doesn't affect the budget amendment, really? Well, I've got stuff already in that budget amendment line for the lot expenses.
See that.
Um, so. That's already covered and um so what we will do is. Um, next month I'll have, because um it's going from the lost fund to the general fund, so you need a resolution. So next month you'll have a resolution to make that transfer and then um. Um, passing the budget amendment tonight, then I will change that lot line in her budget. And then I can move that twenty-one hundred or whatever authority up to her payroll lines. Okay, and then the lost money will go into general fund, so the general fund won't be short, and then she's her budget line, payroll line won't be short.
Is there an easier way to do that than taking it out of lost, or is that? I mean, we just said take it out of lost, you know, have money there, but is there an easier way to do, or does it matter to you?
It doesn't. The easiest way is just have her money paper, like did for the lot, but. The transfer from lost into general is just a resolution for you guys next month, that doesn't matter. And then you want me to just pay for the materials directly out of lost, I assume. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Brian, then the sidewalk stuff, still leave them?
That is not done, yes.
Yeah, so that stuff will will make these changes moving forward.
So they'll have, there'll be more payroll and then it's not done.
Parting lots, though, the sidewalk sections are not.
But that's.
Are you getting that done this year in this in spring?
We'll see.
I don't understand the weather, did it rain?
Yeah, that's chrome.
Can we just add it into where that includes what they need to do and?
Well, I think I have enough in the budget amendment, but I won't shift lines until they actually do it, we see what the actual cost is, but when you go to do it, let. Let me know, so you mark it correctly.
Yeah.
Okay?
True.
So do you need a motion on that some again?
Yes.
So the motion would be to use lost?
To use lost and cover the payroll and that'll be a transfer next month and then use lost for the material.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, 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 hi.
Thank you. Okay. Item number twenty-one, consider a resolution to adopt a policy. Considering contacting the city attorneys. So are you going to talk, Chris, or?
Uh, yeah, so last month's. Invoice from the city attorney was higher than anticipated. There was a conversation among staff, maybe we should look at this resolution. Uh, that would involve two of the three, at least a minimum of two of the three. City representatives in contact with the city attorney, being the city administrator, clerk and the mayor. The date it has been. Just a single entity reaching out to the solicit this information, as you can see in the packet, the. The charges for that on a personal matter were ninety-three hundred and five dollars and municipal matters. Forty-four hundred and forty-eight dollars for total thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars per month. A lot of these municipal matters, Cynthia nor myself even know what the issue is, it's discussed.
And I've never seen an invoice where they just marked municipal matters. I've always been able to see. What the topic is and you can see all the other um. Descriptions, you can see that it's tied to the lot or it's tied to this. I I have no idea what those other charges are.
And how do we find out what those are?
A little bit of clarification on those charges. It was regarding a confidential matter, so I don't know if the city attorney would reveal specifics. However, and they were initiated by myself and I did have the support of Mayor Proton, Marianne. So it was not just a single person reaching out, it was with counsel support.
So let's just say because we don't have an in-house H R person or a qualified person to deal with H R matters. If something comes up and needs to be dealt with. We're not qualified, so. Joanne asked, what do you think I should do? And I said, I think you should contact the attorney for legal advice so that we don't do something. The city doesn't do something inadvertently that's not correct, we need to follow correct H R policy guidelines. So that's what a lot of this stems from. We don't have an in-house person that's qualified for H R, so if something comes up. That's that's your only. That's the logical step is to ask them for their input, which is what happened, and because it does involve personnel, it can't be discussed.
Well, what, like ninety um. Uh, nine thousand was marked personnel, the other was just marked municipal matters, so.
Well, that, if it's municipal matters, you could probably ask Randy what that was for, but if it's H R related and it's confidential, he will tell you that it's confidential. So you're more than welcome to ask him, and if it's something he can't discuss, he will tell you that, but that's. And we don't normally have legal matters, so every now and then, because we don't have an in-house H R person and we probably would have to pay them more than you're paying Chris. It doesn't make financial sense to have someone on staff. That's kind of one of the things that we need to look at is. You know, for training would be H R training. And that's.
Well, and and I wouldn't say that we normally have a legal expense, all at twenty-five every month. We've had what I consider exorbitant legal expenses. And that's why, from a treasurer's point of view, I think this policy is needed.
Do you have comparison of this year versus, like, say, last year, this releases of what? The legal budget has been, you know, offhand?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'd give you a report, sure.
I think from what you said earlier on the. To redo the budget, it was twenty thousand is what was budgeted, is twenty thousand.
We're adding eighty thousand.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that twenty thousand I was budgeted for this fiscal year.
Would have been really close on a normal.
So twenty thousand is kind of normal based on past years, give or take, obviously, so now we're adding. Proposed eighty thousand.
Although a quick check, when I look back on prior year, it looked like we had forty thousand budgeted and then we reduced it to twenty for this year.
So we've got two and a half times more than the one, even if we budgeted for four.
Yeah, but we have no control over what those amounts are from year to year. You don't know. If you're going to have someone sue you, you don't know, we're going, you know, we have no idea if someone's going to fall and get.
I think what they're looking to do, and I tend to agree, is reduce the amount of. Time spent on lawyers, those questions that don't need to be asked. Now, if there's a confidential matter that needs to be handled in closed session, that's one thing, but I think we need to get a list. Generic terms like municipal and personal matters, I don't think when you're spending that kind of taxpayer money, except. I'd want to know what it's actually being used for.
And we just felt that two people's viewpoint that it needed to go to the attorney is always better than just mine or just Chris's or just the mayor's. Um, and if it, let's say. Um, it involves two of the three people, then it, the policy has the council's ability to.
So.
And direct.
To that point. I mean, because there is friction in the city with who can do and who can say and all those things. Um. I don't feel like this is a, I mean, this puts Joanne at a disadvantage. I just do, so I would like to see whether it's me or someone else, whether it's Mayor Proton, can also. Do this with whoever or another council person. Can also do this with whoever or another council person that's to be appointed. I don't care. But I think there needs to be another avenue there because. There's contention a lot between this group. And if it takes two out of three and she's constantly denied access to a lawyer when she needs it. I don't think that's probably going to be a very good outcome.
Well, my question, I, chapter twenty, our city attorney code is in the, I just got added this morning. So you may not have seen it. Um, references. Um, the city attorney. Um, will defend all actions proceeded when requested by mayor or council. Doesn't really even refer to staff, but the proposed procedure does not refer to council at all. So there's kind of a conflict there.
It, it refers to council.
Were you seeing that?
Yeah.
Let me get, oh my God. Someone, I can tell you when I first started, we used to spend a ton. I, I don't know if you would have been here during that timeframe or not, but there were the time when we spent an exorbitant amount of money for legal fees. And we gradually kind of tried to take that away and a lot of it, we've kind of shifted that to engineering, honestly, to tell you the truth.
When you first started, Mary.
Number five.
There's dirt three, it's in nineteen twelve.
When I first started, the city attorney attended every council.
Yeah, I don't know if you were aware of that, but their attorney used to come to every meeting.
That was Mayor, they were talking.
Which is what I'm saying. So it, it just depends like we, and this hasn't been an issue until now. And you guys have been on council for how many years? I'm just saying there's no rhyme or reason to when you will or will not need legal advice. I just don't want it to get to a point where there's issues with that.
Number five, they just counsel Joanne?
No, we haven't had a need to have this. Since nineteen twelve, so just.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you, the council, are not excluded from this contact with the attorney. And I agree with Mary Ann. And again, that's why I reached out to her on a matter that I was not comfortable with. But I wasn't going to go alone on this. So.
I don't think the intention.
And I said, absolutely not. Do you get involved in this? You call the attorney. Because this needs to be totally bipartisan, whatever. You, you just cannot be involved with this.
Ah, I know this makes it unnecessarily complicated. If you're concerned about. Whether, you know, it's a different mayor, different, you know. But in the future, do you want to add the mayor pro tem? And then what if it's tie comes to council?
Yeah, that, that would be, I would be glad.
Because really what I'm looking to do and I'm assuming.
I just want to make even.
And what I'm assuming is that's a lot of money. And to be honest, I want to know what, I, I, I know what some of it is. But I would like something more specific or the ability of council members to have the ability to review it. Especially for using taxpayer money. On some of the things I, I know we're referring to, yeah, I agree with that. That's fine. But on other things, you know. Personal matters, municipal matters can mean anything.
That would be kind of that.
And I want to make sure that if we are, you know, going reaching out to the attorney and stuff like that, that it's actually for a real reason and not just. Slowing the process down because somebody of the three deals can build.
No, I agree. As long as you want, if you want to do that, that's, I think that's more than fit.
Then this would also ensure that two, two people are involved with the response. Sure.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. That way you always have two people. And then if there's an issue, then council.
Yeah, if, if there's, if it's two against two, I don't see why council can't do the tie break right now, getting the one.
I like it.
How would you propose changing this the way it's written right now? Would you involve the council more?
Adding Mayor Pro Tem and number one.
I think adding Mayor, but what was your question about?
I was gonna say, August, August was high. Okay. But what about July, June? Like, is this, are we making a big to-do about anomaly?
This is up eighty thousand per year, not just, I know one month was given as an example. But that's fourteen thousand. We're doing eighty thousand more, so.
I have no problem making this change moving forward because if anything, it, it'll just keep us more conscious about what we're spending next time. I don't.
I know we spent some money earlier this year on employee contracts and that kind of stuff too.
Yeah.
You know, so, and we, you know, we've had changes in our admin stuff. So we've had to have him review. You know, it's a lot of those kinds of documents. You know what I mean? Like when we took Dustin, you know, so they have.
Oh, had a lay down agreement, had a lot of legal review involved with it. Yeah. Yeah, so there's been a lot of.
But moving forward, I don't think that's going to get any less. If anything, with the kind of development we have, it's probably going to get worse. So this is probably a good procedure to put into place today.
Checks and balances.
Again, I'm fine with it as long as it's legitimate uses under standard and flow. I can't remember how many years ago. You know, there were certain individuals in the city that were constantly taking the city to court over the most trivial things and then extending it out as long as humanly possible. So we're going to get increased costs from time to time. But if we want to add the mayor pro tem to it.
To number one.
Well, that'd be the question. And I would change the language to have the. City administrators, city clerk, mayor, mayor pro tem. And then add language in an event if it's like a tie in terms of action we can take and then to.
Refer council.
For the council to find the decision.
Then part two, two of the four named were.
Right, and item number three.
I know, and I know two.
Right, just a couple of spots versus two.
Okay.
So it'd be two out of four. Only Mayor Pro Tem to the number one.
So number one would be only the mayor, city administrator, city clerk shall solicit legal counsel on behalf of the council. Above mentioned representatives may solicit legal counsel. If the above mentioned representatives, in addition to the mayor pro tem. Um. Let me see, I didn't look at that. Mayor Pro Tem should be in number one because something happens with the mayor. The mayor pro tem steps in and that's already in that.
Right, right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Then two four.
Then, yeah.
Two four, yeah.
Two four.
And all the rest of the points.
And then is number five enough, uh, for the council? Or do you need a statement about a tie?
I'd probably just add one more line in number two if, you know, in the event that, uh. It's a tie. Then it'll be referred to city council to see if the legal council is warranted.
And then, um, should we draft revisions to chapter twenty? Three, what this?
Yeah.
Those will be on your next decision.
You got a tie, you got two kind of thing asserted. You just want one more council member or does it go to the whole?
I'd probably say the whole council.
Yeah, who picks?
I would say so too.
Well, and then individual council member cannot make a decision for council.
Right.
I'd want to put the head of council, I rotate.
Obviously, there's a, something going on. We're going to.
Okay.
Madam Mayor. Uh, this is Cindy Anderson. I have a question on this topic.
Okay, Cindy.
I'm not sure if anyone can hear me.
Oh, yeah, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Okay, um, can you please, yeah, can you please explain to me how number five would be implemented? If that were a situation that came about, uh, city council members could not talk to each other about this outside of a council meeting?
It'd have to be a council meeting. A council meeting is the only place that a council can come to a.
Right, correct. That's my question. If there was a situation that needed. Um. You know, immediate attention of an attorney and let's say everybody was on vacation except for the mayor pro tem. And city council couldn't meet, how, how do they direct one of those persons to do that?
Not, nobody's.
Yeah.
The entire group's never been on vacation at the same time.
Or I guess, or if the next council meeting was thirty days away and we needed to.
We'd have a special.
Yeah, special meeting.
You'd have a special.
Yeah.
And I imagine if it's important enough, you're going to find at least three on, where people can read it.
Did you hear that Cindy? Uh, we, if that situation happened, you know, the council meeting was not close. And we needed to have an immediate answer, we would have to have a special meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council, do you have any other questions? And did you need any kind of motion or are we just giving you bags? They've given you bags.
Yeah, I think just draft, redraft it, redraft chapter twenty and have it on next agenda.
Okay. Make a quick note, you're having.
Yeah, chapter twenty says the attorney basically does everything, which is not accurate at all. That's safe, so.
Okay. That was number twenty one. Moving on to another proposed policy. Uh, number twenty two, consider resolution revise the newsletter policy. You should have in your packet. I did, uh, refer this. To the attorney, the same attorney that, um, looked at a previous newsletter ad that was a question. He has lots of questions, recommends that no actions taken until these questions are answered. Council, what would you like to do?
I'm fine moving forward. And if he says what we're doing isn't, uh, legal, then we can change it. I saw what his questions were. I don't really think his question would go with that thought we're doing today.
So you're going against attorney advice?
Yeah, for now, yeah. I don't see what we're doing as a, uh. Blocking any sort of free speech or anything like that. We're not stopping someone from speaking. We're more than welcome to do it on their own personal time.
So explain to me.
Just the newsletter that we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking about the newsletter.
So where are we? Explain to me exactly what we changed in the newsletter that, so I just want to make sure.
We're closing a loophole where anybody can just put write-in candidate at the bottom so they can say whatever they want. In terms of, if you look at the, um, resolution where we are eliminating people's, like, personal opinion and eliminating that in newsletters from previous people doing that. So what we did was we changed it that candidates can vote advertising. But there was a loophole where anybody can just write, write in candidate at the bottom and then magically get to put in their two cents. So we're looking to eliminate that and only allow people who are registered candidates in the election.
And I think if the attorney has, um, questions of, you know, free speech or whatever, I think you just take all political ads out. And you just go with the city info. Nonprofit events and businesses to place advertisements.
And the reality is, is we already do it. That's confirmed. We already do do that because we don't allow people to just put in their opinion in there. And I think the extreme example I would use is, uh, if you remember the tire guy, he accused the mayor being a sex trafficker of homeless women. Should he just put write-in mayor candidate, whatever his name was, Marcus. Hey, don't vote for Joanne, she tracks with a sex trafficker allegedly. That's what we're eliminating. Is that?
No, I, 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 I agree with that. It's just like, I don't think we can throw a hole because the write-in thing, I don't. I think you're right. I think he either has to be all or none. I don't think. Yeah, I don't think you can do it the other way. Yeah, I buy that too.
No political.
And so that would include, one of the attorney's questions was businesses or individuals cannot place ads that may also contain political features. Support for handbags or bond votes or municipal initiatives.
So we either allow political ads that, um.
I don't know if we've ever had anybody to put bond, like vote for the bond.
And we've never had a business submit something that was just not about their business, you know?
So we either establish a standard of you're a registered candidate. Or we remove all political ads, something, remove all, give it somewhere, maybe easy, yeah.
I agree with that. And then if we want to revisit that later at some point, because we come up with some, something from them, I think that makes sense. I'm not doing either. I'd rather, I'd rather err on the side of caution.
So you want to, um, do this policy, just remove number four?
As someone who has been privy to that, of having people say whatever they want, others were not, and attack my family.
So we would need to state that clearly in our policy, however, so we can't, we would just say no political ads allowed or something like that?
We'd remove four altogether.
Why don't you think we need to state?
You don't need to see all the things you're not allowed.
That's a long list.
Yeah. You're just stating what you will allow.
Is allowed. And then if it's not under the list of things that are allowed, then no, it's not allowed. Because if you have to list things that are not allowed, you're going to find some weirdo that found something that you didn't specify and they're like, no.
Yeah, but I, I, let's start with this and we can always.
Totally, you should amend and re bring back next month, Cynthia, or.
But they just tell me to remove, remove number four, that's.
We're just to revise the newsletter policy and the revision isn't a strike number.
This will come up again until next election.
Are we sure about that? Or does it say we can't post political ads? In December and January. Maybe someone's going to get an early jump as a write-in candidate. And just start doing crazy crap twenty-four seven.
For two years.
For two years. So, yeah, get rid of both.
Awfully expensive.
Yeah. Don't people.
Corrected after your motion then?
Motion, second.
Remove number four.
Number four.
To approve every bodies by removing number four.
Yes.
Okay, need a roll call, please, Tom.
All right, I, all right, all right.
I. All right. Number twenty three. This is to revise our meeting policy. Have a meeting policy.
So this is the changes are granted. This came out of last month's meeting, the sharing of time. Oh, yield of time, yeah.
I should comment on this. Robert's rules does not allow the sharing or giving of time. However. Cynthia, it stated in our last meeting that we don't follow Robert's rules to a T.
Right, absolutely.
So that's just a comment.
And I, I think when this policy was written, no one intended that they'd be able to share. Um, in fact, when it was questioned at the meeting. Um. You said it was allowed. I, I disagree, but this is just being more specific because somebody could bring in seven people and, yeah.
Just take it to the extreme, you know? What's to stop someone from coming up and claiming, you know, that we're trying to poison them? Now, when their seven minutes are up, they just have their ten, you know, locals with them and, oh, I'm going to yield my six minutes and fifty-nine seconds to the guy who thinks we're secretly trying to kill them.
And everybody is welcome to submit documents if they have, you know, ten pages of info that they want to put in front of the council and in the packet. You know, they can submit that in writing ahead of time.
So a question I have, and reviewing this again carefully with the seven minute. Time limit, does that? How does that work? If we have a presenter presenting information to us, just an informational topic, are they also subject to the seven minutes? The way this is written, they are. It might be birders discussing financials. Also at the council, if someone's presenting, someone from the public's presenting their position and the council asks them questions. And that extends beyond their seven minutes, kind of separate.
How do other cities do it?
Pardon?
How do, how do other cities do it?
A lot of cities don't allow anybody to speak unless it's a public hearing.
Yeah, most, they have a, before the meeting starts, the, uh. Residents can address council on topics their own agenda. And then after the, at the end of the meeting. Residents address council on anything they want. They have a tight limit of two minutes.
Normally, you would think it would be they would talk for two minutes, five minutes, seven minutes, then we would.
Then we would ask questions and if they're responding to our questions, that's outside their seven-minute limit, is how I would interpret that.
I interpret it as them talking for seven minutes.
Trying to say.
How do you keep track of that, Mike?
Oh, you have timer.
Big timer.
Um, yeah, them going, hey, you know, they ask one question and then I talk for six minutes, thirty seconds and then I tell them, oop, your time's up. No, I don't think anybody is looking to do that. But as long as they're staying on topic.
At all.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. I don't know if we need to change the language to, you know, the present, but then again, you don't want presenter to talk forever, you know, and use the example of Marty Lenz, you know, you can only let him talk for so long until your eyes turn brown from all BS. So, I mean, it's really up to the mayor to limit something, but if it's like a citizen coming up, asking questions or having a position on something, you know, we should let them talk. I don't agree with other cities that don't let people talk at all. But we can limit that to seven and be smart enough that if you're actually presenting or you're Manny or the presenter of that topic, then they're given more.
I'm waiting like. This just says meeting attendees.
Well, it says and attendees, so we could remove the presenter, you know, just have it be non-presenter attendees. So then mayor, council staff and people presenting would not be included in that first sentence.
The first sentence, does that make sense?
That's fine, because we want people to ask questions, but we've all been here long enough. There's been getting just run on, you know, the, while we were with the dog for a long time, you know, my gosh, were you over there? For those that remember that earlier.
I mean, it used to be like if you have nothing new, that nothing new to add, nothing new to share, then, you know, we can't just keep repeating the same thing.
And it can be challenging. It's trying to remain focused on the topic. We can't anticipate what's going to come on their uh, their mouth, however, so mayor discretion has to occur, so.
I'm good.
I'm sure we'll do that. So where did we end up here, Cynthia? Are we leaving it the way of.
Non-presenting attendees, is that the term?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then can you just put legal or?
Where are we changing?
Practice is, intention is this, you know, after you say that, so that way it's just.
That remote transparent orally meeting, the following rules shall apply to all meeting non-presenting attendees.
Oh, so does that mean city council gets to swear? But again, we're moving that the rules apply to the. Don't want to find us anything.
What now?
So down in the part where it says for seven minutes, is that where you want me to put non-presenting attendees?
Sure, it looks at that logic. We don't go up and stand the podium, state our name and address, then we speak.
Right. Sure. Right, I, I don't think we need to change it at introduction point because that is basically is a complement of the rules, so of conduct. But down below, okay. Okay, would you read that for Cynthia? We've got that down then.
Limit the, their comments, limit non-presenting attendees comments to a maximum of seven minutes per person on any given topic with no giving or sharing of time between attendees.
Okay. Is that what you want? Counsel, is that what you want? Okay. Any other discussion? Not consider a motion to adopt that amended policy?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please, Maryam.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye.
Thank you. Number twenty-four, discussion of possible motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five annual financial report, Cynthia. Uh, this is just the standard AFR report on fiscal year twenty-five. Shows all the money taken in and all the money spent. If you got any questions, but it's just recording what's already happened.
That was eighty-four percent of the budget or lower, eighty-five percent of the budget.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I know we didn't go over budget.
No, I can tell you what, I did the math on it.
It was just, just over eighty-four percent of the budget for that year.
And the front page there has to be published in a paper and it's already been in the paper, so it's just a matter of submitting to state. And the deadline's December one. So moved.
Again.
On favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Number twenty-five, discussion of possible motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five annual urban renewal report. This is, this is the hardest report I do. Uh, this is the state tip report. So, uh, this is just tip money, um, beginning revenue expenses, and then it's broken out by debt obligation that, um, how much was paid by tip and then projects tied to the debt. Anybody have a question? Again, due December one. Counsel? Do you have any questions? Need a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
On favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Number twenty-six, discussion and review of sphere financials, annual tip reports.
Maggie apologized. She had a bond issuance tonight when we changed our meeting time or date. She didn't anticipate that, so she did a cover letter explaining the different sections. I went through it and got back to her and she made a couple of edits. And I believe it's, you know, accurate. If you have questions, I think I can answer them for you. She, uh, the first page is shows each general obligation debt and at the top it says like that two thousand fourteen one is paid all with tip, 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 and the, the two thousand eighteen you see is paid some with tips, some with sewer, some with water. The next one is broken up, tip, sewer, general fund and lost. And then tip and then lost, tip and general fund, tip and water. Tip, water and sewer. And like everything in that one, tip, general fund, sewer and water. And then, uh, but fiscal years are, uh, the lines, and so that top line shows fiscal, the fiscal twenty-six and, um, total principal, total principal and interest. What we're showing that tip would pay and that's without fees, so that's a little short. And then how much it's general fund and the purpose and then water revenue, sewer revenue. And then sewer revenue again, but it refers to a different bond. It just breaks out all the different places that they're getting other money. And then, uh, total property taxes, zero. We don't currently levy for any, uh, debt. And so the, uh, your next action will be the tip certification and we are certifying for tip funds for fiscal twenty-seven. And then the next pages go into the revenue debt. Uh, and that can't be paid with tip. Those are only paid with water and sewer, not with fees. And then, um, the next pages show, um, each bond issue, how much is being paid with tip. Breakdown by bond and principal and interest. And then the total. And you don't, uh, make those debt payments from tip. You transfer from tip into the, the debt service to pay them. And then the last page is general obligation debt capacity. Shows, um, remaining geo-debt capacity uh, and the percentage. And if you want, uh, ever since I've worked here, we've said we've kind of wanted to hold twenty percent uh, of that debt capacity back. And so then it shows, uh, to total geo-capacity less contingency reserve. So for this fiscal year, that's seven point, almost seven point four million.
So Cynthia, a question on this page. It's a, and our, what we're looking at is the green page. It's probably general obligation debt capacity, correct?
Yes.
So when we look at fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six, which is our current fiscal year, notice that our capacity had gone down a little bit. That includes the three million dollar bond, general obligation bond we just borrowed, correct?
Sure.
Okay. And then the next, the future ones do not show borrowing anything. If we didn't borrow anything in the future years, we can see how our debt capacity would increase.
I think we did that because of what was going on with the water or sewer, so we.
Well, she doesn't ever anticipate. She just, you know, shows zero and then, you know, waits for your actual decision.
And this is general obligation does not include our SRF.
Yeah.
Correct, our water, sewer obligation.
Revenue debt, yeah. Um, and then, um, you can see the annual appropriation line up there. It's got like three fifty-five, three sixty-five, three seventy. That is that big four point five seven five million and so that you do a resolution every fall, so this last couple of months ago, you did one for fiscal twenty-seven. So each year the council says, yep, we're going to make those payments and here's what the total is. And so only that payment counts against your geo-debt limit, not the whole thing. The advantage of a annual appropriation. And you can see that, um, anticipated growth, she is just showing two percent. Which is typically low for us, which you ever know with rollback and all those different changes, so. Any questions?
Okay, thanks Cynthia. We'll move on to item number twenty-seven. Set a resolution to approve the fiscal year twenty-seven tip certification. So this is when we tell Lincoln County for fiscal twenty-seven, how many tip dollars we want. So there's one page where we show new debt, so the annual appropriation is always on there and then any new debt we do. And then there's a sheet where we tell them how much money we want. And then they know how much, uh, taxable valuation to take from the general fund and from the other taxing entities to generate that much money to send us into. And then there's a, the last page is, um, so if we have a bond that is tip eligible, we could use tip money to pay all of it, but we have chosen to use general fund or water, sewer, whether it's, uh, to avoid LMI or just whatever reason. Uh, then we decertify it with the county and tell them, we're not asking for that chip money now from that loan that year. Uh, so those are the three reasons for the three different forms. Any questions for Cynthia? And these are due December one, too. That's in anticipation to get our taxable total valuation by early January for work on the budget. Don't hear any questions. We need a motion to approve this tip certification.
Motion, second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Jump the gun there.
Okay, item number twenty-eight, judgment to approve the transfers, Cynthia.
This is a, um, every fall and then every spring, uh, we do a transfer for debt. Um, each debt issue is listed there. Um, then it shows you, um, in December, we only pay interest. And, um, and they, they pull the fees on the bond anniversary date now. Um, so I just put all the fees in there because we never know exactly during year one they're going to pull them. And then June one, we pay interest and principal. Um, and so then this is just showing you how much is due on each loan and where the money's coming from, whether it's all tip or, um, different funds. And then at the end, I even showed the, um, payments if no transfers needed. I just feel better that this shows all of our debt and gives you a great, um, sniff of, of everything of, even if a transfer is not needed. And then the listing of where all the money's coming from.
Can we tell them this report if we have any debt that we're getting close to being able to pay off?
Um, no, uh, but I can tell you that the sewer revenue, um, I think is this year and next year. And I think there's one GO that's being paid off this year. One was paid off, I know, last June. Uh, there might be one that's going to be paid off this June. I can look that up for you, but you can't tell by this, so.
Okay.
Some of those older ones have really no interest in the whole thing, like. Yeah, anytime that we do a new one, Maggie looks at all of the loans and looks at their rates and sees if they're callable and if it's better to rewrite it, but yeah.
Sorry, so we're about two sides.
Oh, we're, there was.
Lower, I saw.
Something lower. Borrow more money then.
That's where it's like, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, need a motion to approve these transfers. Someone?
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you. Move on to number twenty-nine, this clears my seven buckets schedule.
So this is just, um, plugging in the updated dates into our regular budget schedule. Hang on, I'm going to get one.
I think I need one if you like, there being a note.
Bakers. Um, so we've already done, um, these first three and we're on number four, to do this budget schedule. Um, that, they did come out with their residential rollback. I I found that out at the budget training last week. Um, four point, or forty-four point five three four five, which is almost three percent lower. Which means you get three percent less of the property's value to use for taxable. So the next step is, uh, first we'll meet with the department heads in December and then the budget forms will be released by mid-December. And at your December meeting, uh, budget proposals will be presented to you. Um, the C I P, um, spreadsheet will be reviewed, we'll discuss payroll. Employees reviews will be complete, completed by December thirty-first. Uh, the taxable evaluations will be early January. I'll have the budget spreadsheet, uh, to you by your January thirteenth meeting. And we'll plan to have a special meeting concerning the budget January twenty-seventh to twenty-sixth. And when we meet with the newly elected, we are giving them a copy of this and of course it's in the packet. They can review it now. And then, uh, follow-up budget review during the February tenth meeting must finalize the levies then because we have to input them so that the county can send out that mailing. And then we have to have a public hearing concerning that new tax statement. On Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, if we want to keep it on a Tuesday. And it has to be a separate meeting and then you can have, um, another meeting.
Back-to-back meetings like we have.
Yeah, back-to-back meetings, 24th of March.
Been changed, yes.
Then set the entire budget hearing for April 14th. So everybody that'll be on the council at that time, if you will, the most important thing is to check your schedules for January 27th and March 24th. The rest of it, there's lots of publication by date things that are deaths for, for me, but. Okay.
What's that rollback supposed to end up at?
What?
What's the rollback supposed to end up at? It's down from 48 down to 44. What, what are they shooting for? You say the residential.
They don't have a, a goal. They, they, every year they look at how much ag went up, how much residential went up in they, because those are coupled and.
I was saying, how much, something like 30%.
No.
Well, that was multi-family. They dropped that to national single family over time, that didn't thing.
Right, but it, that used to be commercial, which is, well, it used to be 100, but it's at 90 now. And so when they reclassified those as residential, they took four years, I think, to get down to the residential rollback.
But they backed it one year. They, they backed it, I think, one out of the four years, right?
Yeah, they like the same old backfilling. Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Oh, we were.
Um, so yeah, I, you know, I don't think there's a, I think each year, depending on the economic situation, the rollback can go up or down. And then based on our, remember, then the new thing is based on our growth, if it's over 6%, there's the calculated general fund levy that, you know, the last two years, I think it's gone down from us, for us from 810. I think there's three more years of that maybe. And then everybody is allowed to go to the 810, or that's what they're saying now. But that's three years from now, so they could change that. And what we have been doing is because that's been going down, since we haven't used any of the other levies, we've been filling in with the insurance levy to keep us at the 810. And if it would ever go down enough that we wouldn't have enough general fund and road use insurance expense to fill, we could add for the employee benefits, you know, for the debt service and still keep, still stay at 810, but just use some of the other levies available. I don't anticipate us needing to fill more than that insurance amount because we pay a lot of insurance, but.
The other topic that comes up every year at the state level is tip. Haven't heard anything about that yet.
Yeah. And at the budget training, we heard that it wasn't, even though they had just done, you know, a revamp of this property tax setup, that they had proposed, had a proposal in front of them of another major one, but it did not gain traction and was not passed, but.
Doesn't wonder if they eliminated property taxes, anything?
They didn't, Mickey didn't go to the specifics. He just said it was a major overhaul. So. You know, and they also discussed taking loss to the state level and distributing that differently so that everybody gets it, even though it was voted in by the voters. You know. We're kind of at their mercy, just year to year, see what changes they make. But, you know, when I talk, when I go to the training and I talk to other cities, we are really lucky that we have our growth. And we're really lucky that we were at 810 and have been and didn't have those other, you know. We talked, one of this, I think the highest rate for just the city rate in Iowa, the town's over $24, where we're at 810. The situation that we're in is much better than some cities.
We're the lowest in Lynn County with the Inceg and Bertram, yeah, we have a whole service, full service.
Yeah, well, it's full service city, yeah. And, and I think that is due to staff and due to elected officials. I think that's really something to be proud of. But that's a good year. And yet, I mean, it's not like we're at 810 and we don't do anything. You know, we have all kinds of projects going on. Both infrastructure and amenities, you know, quality of life, essentials, fire trucks, you know, just all sorts of things. So. You're doing a good job.
Okay. Any questions for Cynthia on the budget schedule? If not, we'll move on to claims. Anyone have any questions on the bills?
What was the concrete hallway fix?
We fixed a few different, like, fish in the wall.
Probably a homeowner.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
One was a complex right outside by the middle of the hallway, middle of the building, right outside there, just north of that. The other one was a issue. We had a trucking hazard on church in the Vanderbilt. And it was somebody complained about it, made it to our notice. We looked at it and they said the street was raised. Well, the street never raised. It was an issue where this, this over years time, it about three inch size, I brought that. Ain't gonna make the homeowner do that. So we just did it. It was a pretty minimal cost. And then here today, we did another spot over at Hawk, sort of park. They have about, all about inch difference, some variation, so they do.
They didn't get a chance to look at it, pretty quick.
Um, they did not. Didn't look at that one. And then we did one spot on the street. Also, that was us in the heart one. We experimented with that, right? They've been talking about that for what, 35 years? And had a little bit of room there, so let's try it once. And they did, okay. Although they would like this thing a little bit better on the street, but it's a lot better than it was. There's still a little bit of it. Be it taking your bow, you probably don't feel it still. Maybe one way, but not the other direction.
You can see if it holds out, Jim.
Yeah, and that's my curious, and obviously with the street, I don't know how that's. Trying one of the newer streets instead of the older street to see what it did. We'll look at it in a couple of years. But, so I guess one of the few years I would like.
Any other questions on the bills? If not, the motion to pay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. So since not on the agenda.
Good evening. Barbara Connor, 101 Williams Boulevard, our other guys. Congratulations to Cindy Anderson and Valley Never Beer and Mary Ann Waymire for winning in the election. And I too appreciate Mr. Gold and Mary for their services. This is concerning the newsletter policy. I'm going to read something that was in the facts. Does Fairfax's future is on the ballot? Your voice matters. Let's keep our community safe and strong. The council may have delayed the vote, but not the threat. In September, the city council voted 3 to 2, 2 to 4 with heavy industrial zoning, despite a room full of residents speaking in opposition and a petition with 150 signatures urging them to stop. Then in October, after the petition had grown to over 300 residents, the council tabled the discussion instead of rejecting it outright, potentially pushing it past the election to avoid addressing community concerns. What's really at stake? While the proposed South Fairfax power plant has been deprioritized by Lion, the zoning that would allow heavy industry remains on the table. And if the council is willing to entertain one heavy industrial project, what's next? Once zoning changes, the doors open for any industrial development to move in. Protect 90 years of Fairfax's identity. For nearly a century, Fairfax has grown as a family-oriented small-town community. Heavy industry threatens that identity, bringing environmental and health risks, lowering property values, and changing the character of the town we're proud to call home. Your vote is Fairfax's best defense. We can't vote directly on zoning, but we can vote on who makes those decisions. From fireworks debates to bloated projects and essential initiatives residents actually want, like the Roundabout on 80th and 151, the council has repeatedly ignored community voices. Now with heavy industrial zoning on the table, the stakes are higher than ever. With the council postponing action until the day after the election, this vote decides whether Fairfax stays safe, vibrant, and true to its small-town values or becomes something very, very different. Vote for council, vote for a council that listens to residents. Deborah Mappi, Cindy Anderson, I'm grateful for Joanne as well. Both are committed to listening. All are committed to listening to residents, protecting our small-town feel and keeping Fairfax as well aligned, aligned with community priorities. Take action for Fairfax.
Someone hasn't muted their phone.
Yeah. Please mute your phone.
Take action for Fairfax. Stay informed. Talk with neighbors. Vote November 4th. Now, folks, I did not write this. I did not write this, but Concerned Citizens of the Community wrote this and they brought it to me because they wanted me to submit it to, to council or to be put in there. And I thought that this was beautifully stated and written and I support it 100%. Now, Mr. Daly said something about, a little bit earlier, about crazy, the crazy things going in the facts. Is this something that you all would consider crazy? Because underneath that, I was the one, Barbara Connor, that's paid for by city council candidate, right in. Barbara Connor, 101 Williams Boulevard, Fairfax, Iowa, and Voices of Fairfax, conserve residents of our community. So I, I guess if folks like Mr. Daly think that this is crazy, I guess I understand why he would think that way. Again, thank you. Have a great evening.
Anyone else like to speak, please?
I always ask a question, I don't have a statement, but.
You want to come up?
I should, I should ask this.
Thank you.
Usually on Citizen's Not on the Agenda, the council does not discuss or respond, but you could ask.
I should have asked this earlier under.
The Torrey, Torrey List.
State where you are. 91110, Maple Grove Road, Torrey.
Sorry, your name?
Torrey List. Okay. I should have asked it during the newsletter policy. So my question, as she was talking, it made me wonder if, though, for instance, when the city administrator had put several large statements, pages of statements, like pro-power plans in the newsletter, that's not political and it's not, you know, a business-related thing. So how does the, how does citizens counter that if employees can state what they like to put in there, but citizens cannot? And I should have asked that earlier, but anyway, that's all I can say.
Good question. Anyone up?
Oh my God.
Okay, unless folks want to respond to that, we'll move on. Items 32 and 33 were removed as just stated earlier. We'll move on to Mayor's comments or response to items 32 and 33. I felt, I'm fully in support of the 90-day review for Chris. It's very appropriate. I just felt the council needed more time to prepare and to review. So I would like to schedule a special city council meeting in order to conduct that. And next week is coming availability. Like Thursday night to Wednesday night, I can't.
Yeah, Wednesday.
All right.
I can't Wednesday.
Tuesday, X, P, and Z meeting.
I'll leave for a day or Wednesday.
I'm a no Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So Monday.
So Monday?
Possible.
I'm double check here.
Oh, don't look at me with that, miss. I take eight million weeks of vacation.
Exactly.
You take it during budgets.
Yeah.
And they read the budget. So I'm hearing not Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday? Sounds like Monday.
Sounds like Monday.
That would be Monday and Saturday.
Wait, hold on, week next week?
Yes.
Maybe. I'll get that. I was, I was living, you can advance.
All right, let Cynthia know tomorrow, or not tomorrow, we're closed tomorrow. You can send me an email, again. I won't read it till Wednesday. Maybe Monday, maybe.
I have a question. We still have our flag at half and I was just that.
Yes, until Vice President Cheney is in term.
Okay.
And as I understand, it won't be until the 20th of this month.
Okay, it just seemed like it was a long time. I was like.
Yeah, my assistant reminded me that Jimmy Carter was 30 days.
Okay. Which has been a while, I guess, since we've had one year. I'll let Cynthia talk about this, the holiday luncheon. Also, we'll move on to Cynthia. So I'm spelling this special. Will it only be items 32 and 33 and everything in the segment five? Council? Yes. And then it'll be up to Chris whether he wants that to have a closed session. It has to be posted on the agenda that way. He was asked and he declined. That's why it wasn't done yet. But he'll be asked again if we do a new agenda. Okay. Is that all I need for that, Cynthia?
Um, just know that the agreement that was in the packet is just the one that we had done previously for Dustin, except it isn't, since Chris was already employed, it's not giving him as much leave. Just, he didn't want any additional sick or personal. And he just asked for one more week of vacation. So that was less. The pay is the same, the cars are the same. And the movie to Fairfax would be six months from the date of the agreement because you didn't have an agreement when he was hired for that requirement. I think those were the only changes other than his name and address.
He's changing your name. That's valid.
And the attorney had reviewed that agreement previous. There was nothing changed that would need.
When they hired Dustin?
Yep, right, yep.
Okay. So, the administrator's next.
So. So I signed up for the Leadership Academy through the municipal city.
Iowa League of Cities.
Iowa League of Cities. I already done a budget training through the Iowa League of Cities two weeks ago, the big.
Uh, the big takeaway on there was service solvency, the ability for the city to keep the services they have today going for the next ten, fifteen, fifty years, you know, out. Looking at ways to finance that, as we know, everything goes up, goes up. And the state is starting to really pull back on the revenue side of what cities can collect through their six percent growth thing. Uh, so they're suggesting new sources of revenue. And I was talking to Cynthia today about the franchise, um, levy possibly along there, but, you know, this, as Cynthia said earlier, the city really doesn't need any new sources right now. We just need to keep looking further out in the future and make sure that we're covered. Um, I attended a roundtable uh, discussion with Representative Cindy Goldberg up in Center Point last Thursday night, and that was a good meeting. It went for several hours, um, and she's really warning the small towns that the state's going to look at that tip pretty hard and probably change it. So we'll see what comes out of the state on that. That's really the big takeaway I had out of that meeting. You know, a lot of their Ely was there, I was there, Alwrenet was there, a couple other little towns around, they were there. Center Point, obviously, they hosted it. She really went on quite a tangent about the, uh, our local leadership and not, you know, the state stepping on the city's toes, I guess, is what it what it came down to, pulling revenue from us. Uh, you know, the ADU thing, we talked about that quite quite a while. You know, that's not going to be very easy for the cities to future down the road, ten, fifteen, twenty years, to have any control of at the state level. So, uh, I guess the takeaway on that is we need to pay a lot more attention to what's happening at the state and get our voices in up there. You know, whether it be through the league or our city administrator even going up there, you know, when some of these things are coming up for votes. Because there's, there's no stopping it if we don't, you know, and it's it's going to get expensive down the road for these cities. You know, the fire departments alone with their requirements they have in upgrading trucks and gear, you know, you heard Spanky talking today. That's just not sustainable long-term without some additional revenue sources. So that was my big takeaway. Other than that, Joanna and Cynthia already hit on a couple of ones I was going to talk about, so.
Take it back on what Chris said. Cindy Golding is a state representative, so it's interesting to hear her position on um, revenues, et cetera, however, she does not represent our district. So, uh, she, it's great to have her support, but we have our own representatives that we would contact directly.
She's rural and county up on that. So I see you guys up in city. Does the League of Cities have lobbyists?
Yeah.
Yeah. There are quite a few, or?
Two.
Just two?
And they certainly continually stress for cities to contact the representative was they're they're saying, tell your story and say how the calculated general fund levy is affecting your city, you know.
Home rule.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it making you, you know, small cities with police departments, you know, is it making you lay off a police officer? You know, real examples of what the their changes have done to our budget or whatever. And they mess with tip because a lot of our debt is paid with tip. And our residents don't see a property tax increase. Like, you know, it is such a good tool and the school and the county never come to complain, you know, and we never take everything that's available. I mean, I'm sure not every city is using it like we are, but in our case, it is like a win-win-win situation for us. And if they mess with tip, when when cities already have obligations out there for that, you know, I I just can't imagine what that would do statewide to to cities.
Is the League of Cities capable of using, setting up meetings with our both Senate and House state representatives to kind of lay that out? Or are they just putting that on to the city to reach out to them?
Oh, I think they meet with them. Their legislative team meets with them on a regular basis, yeah. But I I think, you know, they get used to hearing their reps talk, you know.
I didn't know if it was something they could organize, like, you know, you and Cynthia or Cynthia and Chris and Joanna or whomever, sit down, find a way to get them to have the state reps come down here and sit down and be like, this is how we use it. The proposals that we're hearing are effective negatively this way and.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Don't punish us. Right, when, you know.
A lot of times, they'll do us though, like if you ask, they'll take you, they'll set up appointments.
So I think it's fair to meet it one-on-one because when I first got on the council, I went down to the state legislature, listened to them, talked to the cities. And it was the biggest race of time ever. And I think one-on-one meetings are more productive. It was just one side flowing the other side. It wasn't actually how do we work with each other? The exception for one guy who said, hey, this bag, but it's going to go away and was telling you now, don't pretend you're going to get it three years from now. Well, you know, he was right, but the rest of it was just like the other side of the city. That's all it was.
It's like they only send out, like, if there's some big thing, then sometimes they'll send something out and they'll ask for you to reach out to who you who your representative.
Yeah, they they do that on a monthly basis. So when we.
These are your issues. Please email them and tell them what you think.
Well, and, you know, sometimes the representatives will have, I don't know if they call them listening posts or whatever, you know, they'll be at this location, you know. But again, that's not one town on media level.
One of the helpful things that the League sponsors is a day at the Capitol. That's always in March and this past March, Justin and I went to that and we were able to, they were in session. We were able to put your name on a piece of paper and then the person was in and they called their name and they'd come out and talk to you if they can. And the action would happen. Both of our our representatives and our senator came out and visited with us one-on-one. So that's very beneficial that the League sponsors fact.
So we're young organization that kind of supermunicipal and state level.
I don't know, does the, um, county or the city managers have a lobbyist to them?
I don't know if they do, uh, but the League's lobbyist was in that roundtable discussion at Center Point last week. And, you know, he talked a lot about the ADUs as a pass. They have all these different versions. You know, they they choose the best one once they know it's going to pass and that they felt was the best one. Um, but again, it's trampling out our home rule constantly.
And I don't know if, like, the Iowa Minnesota Paladins Association, if they have a lobbyist, I would be surprised if they didn't. But, you know, they're going to be very focused on utility. I think the League is probably the the main one that covers, you know, all of the top.
And when they're in session, they do a great job, I think, weekly of giving us updates and which ones, which bills they're in favor of and which ones they're not, et cetera, so.
Yeah, I called on several bills.
Okay. Anything else, Chris?
No.
Okay, Cynthia?
Um, just again, please let me know, check out that budget schedule, especially those two dates and let me know if that's not going to work out. And then, uh, we're planning a holiday hot block on Friday, December nineteenth. That email has gone out and just let me know if you're planning on attending and what you're planning on bringing so we can have a good party.
Okay. You know, most of them.
Okay.
Please.
Somebody second.
Our response. All in favor?
All right. Two minutes.
Thought I had it done.
Cynthia, I'm going to throw this in a way, second plus. It says.
Oh, I'm breaking that. Hold, hold tomorrow reminder.
I'm on the opposite.
I got a pinger for you.